Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, June twenty fifth. In compliance with state law, city council, special and regular meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we'll call this meeting to order. And doesn't say it on here, but roll call, please.
I apologize about that.
No, no, you're fine. You were throwing me for a loop. You caught me.
Let's see what happened. I will start with Councilmember Soltis, Councilmember Porter, here, Councilmember Hartsock, here, Councilmember Hurdjauhausen, present, Councilmember Simomo, here, Mayor Pro Tem Smith, here, Mayor Wagner, present. We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you. Look for a motion to excuse Councilmember Soltis.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, state aye. Any opposed? Christina has been excused. Everybody could please rise to join me in the pledge of allegiance. By pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next is approval of agenda. Do we have any changes? Regan?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And just so everybody knows, Regan is joining us virtually tonight. All right. Motion to approve the agenda is posted.
So moved, second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, state aye. Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. First up is reports of commissions. We do not have an Economic Development Council update, and we have youth council here. Nope. Arts Commission. Welcome.
This is my first time going first. What an honor. Good evening, everyone. So I am standing in right now as the co-chair of the Arts Commission because our chair has stepped down or the term has ended for her. So the biggest order of business on our council, or we're not a council. We're a commission. On our commission is determining who our new chair member be. Right now, we're not sure exactly how we're going to figure that out. I think we're gonna do a vote next meeting. But we're giving people time to think about if they want to be in the position or not, and then, you know, elect themselves or be, you know, presented by somebody else. As the vice chair, I'm strongly considering that role as well, since I have had some experience helping out Patty, who did an amazing job, by the way, while she was with us. Other than that, we got our new mural call. We got that back. So we have a bunch of different art pieces that we took a look at last meeting, and we're trying to narrow it down, because we have a significant amount of entries, which is always a good thing, but it's always a lot of work to sift through everything. So we kind of have a strategy down where we're gonna go look at our top, I think, ten next time after we've we voted last, last meeting, and then probably present you with what those look like unless we have any strong vetoes on those ones. So that should be exciting, because the weather is nice, so the install should be pretty quick after we have the pieces selected. And then, other than that, we are going to be in attendance at Kids Fest, and it looks like Covington Days as well. I know we're going to do a chalk booth at Covington Days. So we have hired a muralist to do like a professional mural that you guys will see during Covington Days, and then we're gonna invite children to also do their own murals next to it, or if I know kids, probably on top of it. So that should be fun to see. Other than that, we're still working on the same continued business such as the Pharma Collective, rotating art program and mural program, but there's no new news since the last time I've been here. So unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Anybody have questions for Riley?
So what do you, what do you believe might be the timeline for the mural to be installed? You said nice weather, I'm assuming then in the next few months?
So it's not the mural, it's the it's the boxes.
Oh, boxes.
The light boxes.
Sure.
So we just have to make the selection of them, and then usually we can get someone in within, I think, a month after we've made those final decisions. We have to have somebody make sure that the art fits the boxes that we have selected. So that takes a little bit, but then after that, as long as the weather's good, we can do them the next week, pretty much, from my understanding. So I will update you next month, pending what happens at the next meeting.
All right. Thank you very much, Riley.
Yeah, thank you.
You would do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission. Human Services Commission. We do not have a Parks and Recreation Report. David, planning, welcome.
Welcome. Good evening, City Council. It was a, the planning commission had a very busy schedule this past month. It started with the Comprehensive Plan Update and Pedestrian Bridge Overview Open House on June twelfth. We had excellent support from the city planning and public's work staff, DEA and BERC consultants, and of course, the Planning Commission. Even though we were somewhat disappointed by the public attendance at the physical and virtual event, we viewed this as a successful opportunity to find out more about what others think about the two thousand twenty-four, twenty forty-four Comprehensive Plan and also the five sixteen pedestrian bridge project. Overall, there was very favorable feedback regarding the comp plan information. We were supposed to, we were surprised to hear the positive feedback regarding the five roundabout proposal for five sixteen and two seventy-second Avenue due to city, and also surprised to have some negative feedback regarding the pedestrian bridge in terms of expense and the need. We had three significant, and I can't talk, we had three significant, significant agenda items for the Planning Commission meeting on June twentieth. We reviewed the South King Housing and Homelessness Partners Program, or S K I P, presentation from Lea San Daphne Hernandez with the latest plan information. S K I P is comprised of twelve members in eleven cities and King County with the mission to increase housing stability and reduce homelessness. This is a regional solution of facilities to date, and there is a credit for that effort for Covington. Our compliance and continued support are really a force multiplier for the region. An update of the Step Plan Housing Code also took place at that meeting as relates to the enacted House Bill twelve twenty. It was presented by Daphne Hernandez as well, with a better understanding of the just received final state-approved guidelines. The Planning Commission review of the material was completed in preparation for the public hearing on this subject at next month's Planning Commission meeting. The last item on that meeting was the Comprehensive Plan Element Draft, which went through the final Planning Commission review and recommendation prior to the planned distribution to agencies with review authority. That included Puget Sound Regional Council, Department of Commerce, and King County for the housing element. In our opinion, this is a well-prepared and thoughtful comprehensive plan that has successfully incorporated state and city guidelines, policies, and vision. We're very proud and pleased of what has been accomplished in this team effort. Knowing that we are the twelfth city of fifty-nine in the state to have completed the comp plan submitted to agencies with review authority is excellent prior proper planning for Covington. Of course, from September through November, there will be more Planning Commission review and joint sessions with the city council with any comments received from these agencies, including a comp plan public hearing prior to the final version ready for the planned adoption December of two thousand twenty-four. We have the following agenda items for the next Planning Commission meeting on July eighteenth. A public hearing, as I mentioned before, for the Step Housing Code and the recommendations of the council, and we're going to be going through a mobile food trucks introduction, getting all the information we need for that particular planning. Glad to provide you with this brief status update for the Planning Commission. Any questions?
Anybody have any question? Sean?
That's good news about the roundabouts. Just wondering what, so it was positive, what were they?
They were, I think they were very impressed by the fact, hopefully, people would get through the city faster without stopping at the lights, was the main gist of the whole thing.
Yeah. Okay. Interesting.
Anybody else? David, thank you for a very good presentation and update. Appreciate it. Have a great evening. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Thank you, Joe. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Please note that campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at city hall or during council meetings, including public comments, is prohibited by state law R C W forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. With that, I have Phyllis Ann and David from Covington Library wishing to speak. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is David Wright. I am here representing the Covington branch of the K C L S library system. And I wanted to share with you all tonight that we are in the midst of our summer reading program, where we invite everyone, children, teens, and adults to come and share the joy of learning and literacy. You can get a reading log in person at our library. You can also get a log online through Beanstack. You can earn prizes for meeting your daily reading goals, whatever those goals may be, and participate in some of the many great events that we'll be hosting throughout the summer at the library. So here to tell you some more about those events that are happening, I have Phil Samboldle, who is our library and information services manager.
Thank you, David. Mr. Mayor, Council. Thank you for letting us share some time with you. I wanted to share, first of all, a little bit of the artwork that you and your families can expect when you're participating in the summer reading program this year, our summer reading logs for preschoolers and all other ages. And as David said, this is for all ages in the family. And some of the prizes that they will get is a choice from these adorable little patches that will hook onto things. So get your family involved in our summer reading program. In addition to the reading for prizes, we have a wonderful set of programs happening at the library this summer for our children. We just had our kickoff program yesterday. Monday. Monday. Our, we had a magic show in the library, took over our entire great hall. Also coming up this, this summer, we've got a Spelling Bee Who Done It Mystery Party for teens. We have Sanctuary Stories and Pen Pals with Passato Safe Haven for ages five and older. We've got crafts. We've got the Museum of Flight. We have puppets and art and all kinds of great things for all ages. For our teens, we are starting a Magic the Gathering Club. They just had a sip and paint program. They're gonna be doing something with boba, making boba pins and drinking boba sponsored, co-sponsored by one of our local boba shops. And then there will be a paper quilting program in the end of July for ages twelve and up. So that will be teens and adults. We are starting a new book club for our adults. That is our Overbooked Book Club. This is a book club where you don't have to all be reading the same book. Whatever you're reading, come and talk about it with other readers. That has started on June twenty-second, and we will have that on Saturdays in July and August at the library. Tonight, we left the library in a very busy state. We had in our great hall our Reading with Rover program, where young people can come and read without any concern of how well they're reading, no judgment from the dogs that they read to. In our children's storytime room, we had our Ukrainian Storytime Program, which has been a great blessing to some of our Ukrainian immigrant families who are bringing their children in to hear stories and get some early literacy skills. And then we also left in our main meeting room this evening our Talk Time Program, which is an opportunity for our new English speakers to come and practice their English speaking skills. So these are programs that happen all the time, in addition to all of the programs that we're having this summer, and we do invite you, your families, your neighbors to come down, check out the library, and we would love to see you there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Does council have any questions? Joe?
How often is Reading with Rover? Because I have a seven-year-old who wants to, as he put it today, pet all the dogs, and I think he would enjoy that immensely.
Absolutely. Reading with Rover happens on the fourth Tuesday of every month. And there are more and more dogs. I think we had four in there today. Sometimes we've had five. So, yeah.
Is the, that's great. We need to get a list of those activities that we can put on our website. And Regan might know, but is the library part of our Ready, Set, Play program?
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. I forgot to mention that. Yes, we were, we have been sponsored to be a part of the Ready, Set, Play program. We are a lanyard pickup location, and we are holding the writing, the Writing Wiz badge. So kids can come in and do some kind of writing. They can give us a joke, they can give us a riddle, they can write their names, something fancy, something simple. It doesn't have to be big. So yes, thank you for reminding me that that was a part of our summer program as well.
Perfect. Anybody else? We will, well, my girls and I will see you.
Excellent, yeah. Were you finished with everything?
Yes.
Great. Thank you very much. Really appreciate hearing that, and we can, for those listening, is just go to the King County Library System online for Covington. You can see all the details. Yep. Thank you very much. So anybody else wishing to address council this evening? Or anybody online wishing to address council this evening? Seeing nobody, we'll go, we'll close our first public comment period. We'll have a second one towards the end of our meeting. Next is approval of consent agenda items C one through C four. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, state aye. Any opposed? The consent agenda has been approved. Next up is new business item number one, discuss offering discounts to Covington business owners for community room rentals. And I believe this is being brought forward by council and Jennifer Ethan.
It was requested by council, but I can provide a brief staff report and then
Thank you.
turn it over to the council for discussion. And mostly, I'm just gonna go over what is in the packet. Just to give you some basic information of kind of what we do now, and then we did a kind of limited survey just to kind of see what some other jurisdictions around us are doing with discounts and their, their rental facilities. So what we do currently with our community room, and that's mostly what we were focusing on, is we have a resident residential rate. Those are seventy-five dollars an hour. A residential rate of seventy-five dollars an hour and a non-resident rate of ninety-four dollars an hour. The only exception to that is that we do extend a discounted rate to homeowners associations at a rate of twenty-four dollars per hour. And then there's actually some, and I didn't get this into the packet, but there's a few other exceptions. We have some service clubs that we do not charge a rental fee at all for. And then if we have reciprocal use agreements, so like the Kent School District, if they had a need, because we get to use their facilities largely for free, we would extend their use of the roof for free as well. Looking to see what other folks are doing around us with their room rental fees. Even though we didn't really set out to look at whether discounts were being offered for nonprofits, it was quite obvious that that was actually more common than offering discounts for city-owned businesses. So we just kind of jotted that information down. No agencies really offer discounts for city businesses, with the exception of Auburn. They extend, they basically don't do it for all businesses, but for nonprofits, they actually have a different rate for city nonprofits versus non-city nonprofits, if that makes sense. And then there was kind of a, a range of what type of discounts are offered for nonprofits. Some, some cities do, some don't. Some are, have qualifications and some don't. And then just some takeaways from us taking a look at this is if it may be an issue to offer discounts for room rentals due to gifting of public fund issues. And then discounts for nonprofits are offered by some agencies, but not all. The degree of discounts range between twenty and thirty percent. And then we did jot down a couple bulleted considerations. One is, we may want to avoid gifting of public fund issues, so it may not be a good idea to offer discounts for profit businesses. But other than that, it's really up to the council to, to discuss and provide direction to staff. We didn't really want to get too far down a path without first getting direction from council on this.
Jennifer. Question. Thank you for pulling us together. I really appreciate city staff's time on this. This information is super helpful. I did have a question about the HOA reduced rate and the no-charge-to-service organizations. When we're doing that, are we ensuring that it's it's for HOA meetings? Are we ensuring that it's for a, a group event specific to the service that that service org's mission supports? I mean, are we doing that kind of?
Yeah, I haven't heard of any issues that we'd have concerns that they weren't using it for HOA meetings or, or what their specific business was for. We're actually, as this came up too, I will say that we were looking at potentially bringing some revisions to how we do specifically the community room rentals. Right before, I think it was February of two thousand twenty, and then COVID happened, and so that quickly became something that was put on the back burner. But we found a draft policy that staff had been working on at the time. So we may be looking a little bit at how can we better define like what the service organizations are? Because it, the resolution from two thousand and eight calls out some specific service agent, service organizations, and it might be better to just qualify them as a certain category or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I personally get the the potential of at least a perception of gifting of public funds. I get that for the, for profit businesses and in order to continue to support service orgs and HOAs, language that maybe just says non, nonprofits, because that should cover all of those. Do you request a nonprofit number? I mean, how do you verify that?
Currently, we don't offer discounts for nonprofits.
But we But service orgs and HOAs you do. So how do you verify it's a service organ and HOA?
So I think the only, you know. For HOAs, I think it's only local HOAs, and it's only a limited number. So I think we just know that they're local HOA. And I'm thinking it's maybe a handful a year. And then I have the resolution from two thousand and eight, and it just calls out the Lions Club, the Rotary, and Kiwanis Club specifically. So we kind of know who those entities are. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, question about, was there a, a specific concern in the community that brought the topic up?
Yes, a business pointed it out to me that they were surprised that there was not a discount for businesses that choose to, to be here and go to. Definitely.
Anybody else? Beth?
How does the staff feel that the, I mean, obviously, they're working on a resolution four years ago and, or looking at the fee structure and potentially making changes. How are they feeling it is now with the staff that's in place? Is it problematic for them, or is it clear enough, or is there a reason why it would need to change from their perspective?
I think it's a little bit of a housekeeping item. Currently, all other fees in the Parks and Recreation Department are set under the authorization of the city manager, and so we update those annually based on costs and, and the local market as for, for what would be appropriate. The resolution from two thousand and eight kind of predates that process, and so it's kind of in conflict with that. So we'd probably be bringing a consideration for council to just kind of repeal or, or avoid that previous resolution, and then we just update the fees for the community room. But I don't see it necessarily changing the fees a whole lot. We still, I think, carry forth the intent of that resolution to offer discounts to HOAs and service clubs. I think one thing that might be useful for us as we do kind of work on that is if there is any direction from council or interest to offer discounts for nonprofits, because currently that's not something we do, and we don't have to, but that would be something we could do, if that was of interest for the council.
Is, so first off, well, is there any more questions?
No, I was just going to, to answer, or well, maybe it's premature for me to respond to.
So do you want, you want direction tonight? Or would like direction tonight? So is council, is there consensus to offer a discount to say nonprofit five oh one C threes? Is that better to say?
Yeah, we had come up with some sort of qualifier.
So is council good with that?
Yeah, I don't think HOAs are five oh one C threes, but we've got nonprofits.
Well, nonprofits, is HOAs or nonprofits? Well, they're five oh one C sixes, I believe. So.
Five oh one Cs.
We could come up with something where it's five oh one C threes or city-located HOAs.
Yeah. Okay. So is council consensus for that?
Yes.
Well, I had the question first.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Okay. Yes, Beth.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I, my general thought, I'm, I'm fine with that, although I think that there are certain organizations like the Girl Scouts, like Kiwanis Rotary, some of those that, that do activities that support the city and vice versa. And I think the discount should be significant if they're having something there, just because there is a reciprocity of benefit from the city and the service organizations themselves. I don't know how often that happens, or.
We can take, we can take a look at those kind of things. I think that makes sense to have discounts kind of proportional to the type of benefits that those organizations might be benefiting the city. So.
Because we're not saying what discount we just, to have you bring back, that we are interested in a discount for nonprofits. And on the matter of businesses, are we good not offering the discount because we don't want to give public funds? Okay. So there's, so there's consensus on both parts, Ethan.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to click comment so council knows, just because I played the designated staff person. When we do waive a fee or give a discount, the city still is paying someone to be there the entire time. So we just want to take that in correct, to account, but there's still a cost. It's not just, oh, we're not getting a fee.
Yeah, and that's something that the draft policy, I think, already starts to look at. Like, if it's during usual regular business hours, it, it, there may not be a fee, but if it's during non-business hours, when we bring in a facility monitor, there'd be an additional fee. So, good point.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Ethan. Next up is new business item number two, a proposed resolution authorizing the use of a small works roster in establishing the small works roster process to award public works contracts. Mark?
Thank you very much, Mayor. This should be fairly brief. The state legislature in two thousand twenty-three passed new public works procurement laws for relatively smaller public works projects that go into effect on July one. So currently, and what's in place right now is anything above three hundred and fifty thousand dollars must be competitively bid, go through a sealed bid process, and you'll see this for large road projects like the Coming Connector or otherwise. And right now, there's certain rules that are in place for, for projects that are less than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And what we've been traditionally using is these, the small works roster process that M R S C has. Different contractors will, 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 if they meet certain criteria, can be on a pre-vetted roster that we can select from for these projects that aren't as, as expensive as some of the others. And that's because the, the administrative burden of doing some of these smaller projects, it doesn't, the juice doesn't, what's the phrase?
Justify the squeeze.
That's just doesn't, just doesn't, doesn't justify the squeeze. But on page eighty-five of your packet, it shows the, the old thresholds and the procurement requirements that we've used for many years. And it also shows what the legislation does is going into effect on July one. And so really, they're repealing the old way of doing this and putting in a new way, a new processes for in different thresholds. So what they want to do is make a uniform statewide roster that M R S C will be making, Municipal Research and Services Center. And this is going to be used across the state for anyone who wants to be able to access it. And that was part of the legislation as well, because not all agencies had, were able to use it. Certain irrigation districts and other smaller political organizations weren't able to use the roster, which the this legislation has cleaned up. And another thing that this is trying to accomplish, that the legislation is trying to accomplish is is tended to give small businesses greater access to government contracts. So there's additional provisions in here that can provide for cities to directly contract with smaller businesses. And as you'll see on page eighty five, the thresholds have just changed for what the amounts are and what the requirements are in place for the procedures for these procurement processes. And just as a reminder that these are all set in place by state law, so we get the lowest responsive responsible bidder. So we're always trying to make sure that we're protecting the public person, getting the best price we possibly can on all of the, on all of our public works contracts. So there's the other major change here is that in certain cases, we're going to be able to do direct contracting. And that that would be subject to certain requirements to work with small businesses and make sure that we're going through an appropriate equitable distribution to small businesses. But ultimately, it's another way for us to be able to contract if we need to. And so the resolution that you have before you, it's it's really just there to say, hey, yes, we can use the new MRSC roster that's going to be coming out. And two, it's going to provide the required procedures that the legislature also said that cities have to adopt certain procedures in order to do this, and that's what the resolution does. And three, it authorized the city manager to adopt additional procedures in case there's some things, utilization plans or anything else that needs to go into place in order to make sure that we are complying with everything in the state law, so we avoid any discomfort with the state auditor. And we had a training with staff on this yesterday and walked through this with our parks, public works and other staff. And we have a pretty clear understanding with where we're moving forward with this. And other than that, it's, I'm happy to answer any questions you have or get into any of the details of the thresholds or anything else.
Anybody have any questions for Mark? All right. Thank you, Mark. Before us, council, we have a potential to approve the resolution authorizing the use of the MRSC small works roster and establishing a small works roster process for wording, awarding small public works projects.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Beth, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I think, I think it's great when we look for efficiencies that still protect public funding and I like the idea of something that can give small businesses an opportunity. I think a lot of people appreciate small businesses and their impact on our economy and being able to directly negotiate on those lower lower price projects, which are still quite high, hundred fifty thousand dollars, but is a fantastic way to to help keep the process moving. And I, it sounds like it's a less of a burden for staff. So it's kind of a win-win. And I know you all did your due diligence to make sure we're following the code. So appreciate that.
Thank you, Beth. Joe, would you like to speak to your second?
Yeah, it's, mine's very simple. In doing this, we will stay in compliance with the state laws and as much as we like to complain about mandates from the state, I don't want them coming and yelling at us for not. So.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else wish to speak?
Thank you. Well, and I think we have the added benefit in this that there will be a pre-vetted list or a list of pre-vetted smaller businesses that we can tap into. So we don't have the burden of, you know, going through that vetting process.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak for again? Thanks. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution authorizing the use of MRSC small works roster and establishing a small works roster process for awarding small public works projects. All those in favor state aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you all very much. That concludes our business tonight. Looking at our future agenda, we have our next meeting is on July ninth. We do not have, so far we do not have a pre-meet schedule. We'll start at seven. And we will have public communication offering the proclamations to our citizen and honorary citizen of the year. Does council have anything else that they'd like to see at a future agenda? All right, seeing no one, then we will move into council staff comments. Adam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Ethan?
Nothing from me tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan. Dawn?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Selena?
Good evening, council. Nothing from me.
Thank you, Selena. Casey?
Uh, nothing from me either. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark?
There's no executive session.
Thank you.
Nothing from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Regan?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a heads up, I did send an email out, but as you know, we have had our budget kickoff with staff and we are working on decision cards for the twenty twenty five budget. So if there's anything that the city council, any city council member is interested in submitting, please work with me so we can get those done prior to July seventeenth. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Regan. Krista?
Good evening. As you know, typically we cancel our second August meeting. And so I would like to ask for council consensus if you'd like to cancel the August twenty seventh meeting. And I am seeing, okay, thank you. That is all I have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Krista. Beth?
I had the opportunity to sit in on the Cedar Creek Park HOA meeting last week. I think they probably had about ten in attendance. Some of their concerns were speeding on two oh fourth and crosswalks, lighted crosswalks from two oh fourth to allow them to to cross the street from their their division. And I I sent Regan some questions they had for me that I I didn't have immediate answers for. So we're working on getting back to them on that. We did discuss some of the upcoming items for funding streets and they were amenable. And I think that's about it, Craig.
Great. Thanks, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one thing, we had the RFA meeting. Elastic Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority meeting. Fairly quick, we recognized a life-saving event where one of our RFA members actually pulled someone out of their burning manufactured home. So was able to get them out of their house. They did also, and this is kind of a neat thing, the RFA, if someone even attempts to save a life, they will recognize them because often just the act of getting involved, as you probably know, raises the the potential for that person to survive their either medical or or fire emergency. In fact, in King County, they told us, people that start, people that get CPR, they have a fifty percent chance of survival in King County, whereas the national average is about thirteen percent. So, and I think that's partially because people are willing to at least take action and they'll start the EMS process. So that was, that's really good. They also promoted a number of people from engineer, from firefighter to engineer, and then a a couple to captain and then one to battalion chief. And I been on the RFA for quite a while. Those are the only positions they have. I would thought there'd be others, but it's firefighter, engineer, captain, battalion chief in chief. I thought there'd be like lieutenant or something else, but that's it. So but there was a number of people that got promoted to engineer and they bring their families and take pictures. It's, it's pretty it's pretty important for them. So and then the other things on the meaning, I think the couple of things they, we pass ordinances there too on things like surplus property. They have some vehicles that they are going to let go of. And in order to do that, the RFA has to sign off on if it's above fifty thousand dollars. So there's a couple of things they're going to sell. We also got an update on a potential new fire station in Kent. They've been looking at expanding toward south. And they found some property that's going to work for that. So they're excited and there's a lot of work that goes into finding a spot that can serve as a fire station. So it's been a real eye-opening and interesting experience. And then the RFA was, as you all know, recently expanded to add Tequila to our service and the city actually voted and approved that. Well, the RFA has already been approached about from another city about possibly expanding to them, although the chief mentioned a couple of things that are leaning against that. One, we just expanded to Tequila, so we want to see about getting making sure we're providing service to that area. And then two, the community that was asking or seeking, they feel that there, it's a little premature to start. Their proposal isn't quite as far along as Tequila's was. So they're going to at least for now, not consider expanding further than where we are. So that's it.
Thank you. One I wanted to give just a quick update, because I don't know if it came up at the HOA meeting you were at, Beth. But when we had the last mayor's meetup here in at City Hall, we had a couple of residents who brought up the fact that there's a bus stop as you come down two oh fourth towards two seventy second and you turn left. Right as you turn left, there's a, there's a legitimate bus stop with a sign, but there's no pullout for the bus. So that bus stops right there and it backs up traffic from those on two oh fourth turning left and those traveling down two seventy second. So I have raised that up with King County Metro, met with them last week and there was no update on that yet. So that question, did that come up in?
There was a mention of a school, a bus stop, but I think it was a school bus stop.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure you knew then that we're still waiting on King County Metro to give us an answer on that. And then speaking of King County Metro, as I serve on skateboard, we had previously voted to meet in person quarterly. So last week, our meeting was in person. And the interim CEO of King County Metro was present and gave an update. His name is Goran Sparman. One number that he gave that really wasn't that significant, but could make a difference to us down the road. They are seeing a twenty-two percent increase in ridership. They said that equates to about plus three hundred riders. Hopefully, down the road, ridership will help us with our case through all of our transportation boards to get an additional route here. The other thing that I think will also help us down the road is the link rail is expanding. So it's going to open in Federal Way soon, and then we'll go further south and it will at at this point will terminate at Tacoma Dome. They don't have anything beyond that in in the works that they're talking about yet. But the fact that it's coming to Federal Way, we've got a couple of new stops stations opening in Kent and Star Lake, Federal Way Downtown, Kent Des Moines should also be another compelling reason to have another route here that gets our riders further out to to where Link Rail is writing. Also cited by the acting CEO was that we're the largest cap that King County Metro has the largest capital program in the country. And that it's one of the safest in the country. So of course, you know, we didn't get any statistic statistics on that. Although he did say, well, he understands that perception is critical, but they are also focusing through the help of a consultant on safety and security. And they have hired five hundred security FTEs. So that's a pretty big jump in their headcount. That's all I had on that. I did have a question on HOA participation for National Night Out. Chief, are you still going to head up the distribution list on that again?
Yes, ma'am.
And will that be sometime early July?
It's going to be this week.
Okay, thank you.
Dawn? Thanks, Debbie.
I just wanted to to speak to the the pullout, Metro pullout. What we've been told, especially the last few years from Metro, is they actually prefer inline in-lane stops and not pullouts as part of their design. And in fact, that is their standard now because they say that they have a hard time getting back into traffic once they get out. And so so just, I wanted to let you know that if you didn't already know that, and that's some of the reasons why is when we've even built or planned on projects. And we say, hey, do you want us to build a pullout? And they're like, no, we don't want that. We want them to be in-lane stops. So just wanted to give you that information.
Is Dawn, is that the reason why they moved the one from in front of Big Lots over to back where it used to be in front of Taco Time so they can get over?
Yeah, that was part of it. Yes, yes.
Okay. Thanks, Dawn. Jennifer?
Um, I don't have anything.
Okay.
Joe?
PIC did not approve the new policies yet because we hadn't had a chance, because the the new policies hadn't made its way through the equity cabinet. So we should be voting on that next month. So hopefully we get that taken care of and we have our new policies for the first time in twelve years. So it'll be nice. I am, the mayor and I are going to be at an HOA meeting on Friday at Cornerstone. I'm fully expected to hear a lot about Cedar Heights and cars and people picking up their kids.
Only from two people.
Still, at the last school district board meeting, our youth council presented. And they did a very good job. I watched it. I went back and I thought they did a very good job. And they brought up one of my favorite topics, and it's slowly turning into Debbie's favorite topic of transit. Because one of the students mentioned that they go to Kentwood and that they do running start at Green River. They don't have a car, but there's also no bus to goes that goes from Covington to Green River, or even Auburn for that matter. And they brought that up to the school district, which to me made me happy because I remember bringing that up to the school district at our joint meeting. The, and I heard that and I immediately shot off an email to Jacqueline and the mayor and Regan, just to make sure everyone's covered on this, that as the vice chair of the RTC, I get I don't get special privileges, but I try to force special privileges for myself on there, where at our next meeting in July, I am inviting the youth council to attend and make public comments to the entire regional transit committee, King County Metro and the King County Government. So I am hopefully able to host the meeting in this room so we can have many of the youth council members there to give public comment. I'm going to clear that that is okay if they don't need to be on a phone. But that way that they can present during that time on the Zoom call in July. So that way, not only am I preaching it, but the youth of Kent, of Kent, Covington and Black Diamond are able to tell King County what we want and what we need out in this area. And be that group of people who's wants to be involved in making sure this happens. So I need to verify the date of our next meeting, which I believe is July seventeenth and see if we can't get some youth council members to attend, give up a Wednesday afternoon and go from there.
Thank you, Joe. Do you have a question, Beth? All right. I like Sean brought up Ready, Set, Play started yesterday or today with at the park handing out ladders. And the library, thank you for being a participant again this year. And I believe there's twenty-four businesses this year that are participating. So it's great that the businesses will do that. I had the pleasure of attending AWC last week. There were there was a lot of good sessions. The first session, the two that really I remember is Fife talking about their jobs program, which has helped to get all of their homeless people off the street and into jobs, into houses. So they have a zero homeless problem in fight right now. But they partnered with Pierce County and the city of Tacoma, and it's been working great for over a year. Sean, Regan and I talked about it yesterday. So I'm going to set up a meeting where we can have either someone from Fife come, either Derek Matheson can come and talk or the set up a meeting where we can have either someone from Fife come, either Derek Matheson can come and talk, or the gentleman that's their community liaison that's running the program and uh, or we'll go down there, visit. It's uh, I saw pictures, it was an hour and a half, a discussion, and it went very well. And then our keynote speaker was, um, I always pronounce his name wrong, Peter Kajayama um, spoke, and he has a new book. So I bought a book for each of our council members, and Regan, yours is on your desk. And it's For the Love of Cities Revisited. And it was a great um, discussion that he had. And um, I have his card that uh, he would be willing to come back out and speak again. We had a lot of participation. In fact, our youth council really uh, at Kentwood really hit it off and actually, I think they came in first place with some of their suggestions uh, for what we should do with the city. And it, they've enacted on it, it's gone very well. Um, so those books are for you and Peter signed them, so that you each have a signed copy.
Can't see, thank you.
And uh, I put Christina's in her mailbox for her. Uh, that is all I have tonight. Um, so that moves us into the second public comment period. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are to be related to city business. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to four minutes per speaker. For attendees participating by Zoom, click the raise hand button. For attendees participating by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand. Once the city grants permission to speak, press unmute in Zoom or dial star six to unmute by phone. Please note, campaigning for any ballot measure or candidate at City Hall or during council meetings, including public comments, is prohibited by state law RCW forty-two dot one seven eight dot five five five. Anybody in our audience wishing to address council this evening? Anybody online wishing to address council, please raise your hand. Seeing nobody uh, raise their hand, public comment is closed. There is no executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-two. Thank you all very much.